Good morning, everyone. Today is the nice brisk December 5th of the year 2017. It's a little after nine. We welcome everyone here to the meeting today and hope everybody has a great day. I hear my call this meeting to order, but follow the rule.
Chairman Fambro.
Present.
Vice Chair Gago.
Here.
Commissioner Omedo.
Present.
Commissioner Odom.
Present.
Then we can have a forum. Chairman with please, Mayor. Marcus and Julius in the club. By flag of the United States of America and due to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, equal is all, liberty and justice for all. Everyone, please remain standing. We have a paper from the Sidi Garba Tibetan Buddhist sinner. And she's going to share some words with us today for the start of our meeting. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for inviting me. I've been asked to do a little prayer. And I thought I would do a little motivation for the meeting. So that it's on a wonderful start. The motivation would be for you all to do wonderful work for this town, for all the people of this town, and which spreads out into the world. And the prayer I've chosen is one that you probably all heard. It's the prayer of Saint Francis of Assisi, which is a Christian or Catholic prayer, but it's been slightly changed at the end. It's also a very Buddhist prayer, so. Lord Buddha, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon me. Where there is discord, unity. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is error, truth. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is sadness, joy. Where there is darkness, light. Oh divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled, happiness for the ego as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned. It is in dying, having practiced, that we are born to eternal life, from happiness to happiness up to full enlightenment. May all beings effortlessly attain the transcendent blissful state of omniscient Buddha.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, commissioners?
So we must determine if our three genes.
Okay, a motion to approve the agenda presented. Second and a second, put on the roll.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom. Yes. Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Okay, one of the many parts of our meeting always is rewards and recognition. Today, we're going to recognize Benedict Jeffrey Marcus from the Church Department on his graduation from the Mexico Law Enforcement Academy. Presenting today will feature Jerry Hope. And if he has family here, if you want to bring them up as well.
Thank you, Chair. Any commissioners? Yes, he does have family seated here, his mother, father, and family. Of course, this is Deputy Jeffrey Marcus. We're very proud to have him onboard now as a fully certified law enforcement officer through the state of New Mexico. Jeffrey took on that endeavor and completed the 16-week training academy. Just to tell a little story, before Jeffrey left, and this is kind of my practice with most candidates, I bring him in, we have a little heart-to-heart talk. And I explain to him that the best thing they can do is what they're told. While they're at the academy, they answer to the staff there. And then a good judgment for me is that if I can go to the academy and mention to the instructors, how's my cadaver doing, and they don't know who you are, that's a good sign. It means you're flying under the radar and not drawing negative attention to yourself. Week 13 of 16 weeks, I was at the academy for other business. And I encountered both the lead instructor and the primary instructor for Jeffrey's class. And I asked that question. I said, "How's my cadaver?" And they said, "Well, which one's yours?" And I said, "Jeffrey Marcus of Taos County." And they said, "Jeffrey Marcus, which one is he?" And they looked at each other. That was an awesome sign for me and told me that Jeffrey was doing exactly as he was supposed to be, which is flying under the radar and not drawing negative attention to himself. I'm very proud of him, I know his family is. And today, the formal pinning of his badge to display the oath of office that he has sworn to is kind of a final step. He's graduated, he received his certification, he's had a party at his house sponsored by his family, which was a tremendous feast, if you will. So without further ado, Jeffrey, attention. It's my honor to present you your badge and oath of office, displaying that you are a full member of the Taos County Sheriff's Office and employed under Taos County. And that this badge shall display the oath of office that you have taken and the duties and integrity that it displays.
Pretty good, Chair, for a plug.
Thank you. It's an honor to be up here, it's an honor to be wearing this uniform, this badge. It's been a given mine ever since I was little. Without the love and support of my family, my county deputies, other members of the party, it would have been a longer journey going to the academy than I thought it would. Would be an experience I won't forget, something I'll never want to go back to. But it's an experience I won't forget, so thank you, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
If you want to get a picture, could I make a commission for the photograph of me? The food? All right, this person. Turn to the left. Very nice. Thank you, guys. Next item is our citizens concerned. Any citizen wishing to speak to the commission today about something on the agenda, something on your mind? We do ask that you keep your comments for less than five minutes and no action can be taken, but staff may send something up later. First up would be Ms. Erin Sanderson.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm just here to inform you of the latest work that the intergovernmental council has been doing, and I know you all know about it. Commissioner Kent O'Donnell has been attending the IGC meetings, as has the county manager, Leander Cordova, and on our last meeting, Mr. Fambro. What I have for you today is what I'm calling Revision 7 of a collective document about initiatives that the IGC can choose to take on or not. The intent is to reignite the collaborative work of the IGC in support of what the county is doing in terms of its economic development. So I just wanted to pass out the current revision, so you have a copy in your packet and you can read it at your leisure. And then we will be working with county manager of the ethical work session in January so that we can go in depth on what this means for the county and how it can support the work you're doing moving into 2018 and beyond. That's it, just as kind of an update, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda, oh, anybody else wishing to speak to us here today? Along this? Okay. All right. Thank you all. Item 7 is the minutes of receiving approval of the November 21st, 2017 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners?
Wish me approval?
Motion and second to approve the November 21st, 2017 regular meeting minutes as presented. Put on the roll.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom. Yes. Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Commissioner Fambro.
Yes. Moving on to item 8, our consent agenda. I will read the items A through I, if any wishes to discuss or ask questions over them. We'll poll those and those will be the meeting business following a vote on the consent agenda. Item A, Resolution 2017-57, a resolution adopting the enchanted circle trails plan for Taos County. Item B, Resolution number 2017-58, a resolution adopting the community conservation plan for Taos County. Item C is approval of budget adjustment general funding 0101. Item D is approval of budget adjustment intergovernmental grant funding 0218. Item E is approval of DFA Resolution Number 1227, fiscal year final budget, a resolution requesting to adjust the 2018 fiscal final budget to establish budgets for the 18 New Mexico Department of Transportation Traffic Safety Bureau grant agreements to properly account for regular expenditures of that grant agreement. Item F is approval of contract between Taos County detention and San Miguel detention for inmate confinement. Item G is approval of the grant agreement for appropriations A16A5101 to plan, design, and construct and equip a new senior center for Taos County. Item H is approval of the grant agreement for appropriation A16A5102, purchase and equip vehicles, including metal delivery vehicle for Taos County senior meal delivery, sorry, for Taos County senior center in Taos County. Item I finally is request for approval of a MOU between Taos County, Taos County Sheriff's Department, and Taos Public regarding registration of convicted sex offenders within jurisdiction of Taos Public. Commissioners, I've read the consent agenda. I seek either a vote, a motion to approve and a vote, or if you have an idea you wish to pull, let me know at this time. Commissioner Omedo.
Mr. Chairman, very much, also a motion to approve items C through I and if you could listen, a little bit of items A and B.
Okay, so Commissioner Omedo would like A and B, the resolutions that regarding the plan that was presented to us at the last meeting, hold for discussion after, so we have a motion to consent C through I. Do I hear a second? Second? Put on the roll.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom. Yes. Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Okay, first item, next item then will be Resolution 2017-57, a resolution adopting the enchanted circle trails plan for Taos County. Mr. Porter.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Omedo, of Mr. Lee Hill and Mr. Sanchez are both out of the office today, so they asked me to field this. Basically, this is just the approval of the two plans that we saw in our work study at the last meeting. So it's just pretty standard approving those two plans, accepting them so that we can finalize.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, if you could just give us a quick one.
Well, as was presented in the work study, I don't know why you're getting better than native, but the community conservation plan was basically a collaborative effort with the Green Print and Transfer Public Lands. They put together this plan using some of our data, using a lot of the data from the town and other municipalities, and they came up with a lot of data in terms of the maps. And so they showed us a lot of maps with a lot of useful opportunities there to pick up different data. And so the trails plan, which is kind of use, they use the data from the conservation plan to work on the trail plan. And the trail plan identifies opportunities for us to create new trails, for us to look and explore deeper into trails, and it gives the Trail Association a tool to, so they set funding to solicit by some of their partners.
Commissioner, they gave us some handouts, and then they're also available online. I'll make sure that you get copies of their presentation and the link to their interactive mapping. It's really cool, you can pull up anything on the, and look at the trails, and they'll tell you the history of the trail, the link, if it's for somebody like our age, or if it's somebody pretty younger and more. It's a pretty cool software that you can use those handout.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't able to get that particular work, so.
It was, it was pretty, I was really impressed by the mapping link that they have on that, that you can look pretty much anything in the calendar. Very cool.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blakenham.
Yeah, I just added, you know, the funding came from LoR, which is a local nonprofit, and it worked with a national base plan trust to put all of it together.
Commissioner, would you like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-57? Try to vote. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve Resolution 2017-57, adopting the enchanted circle trails plan for Taos County. Put on the roll.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom. Yes. Commissioner Blakenham.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes, and item B, Commissioner, would you make a motion on that?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Second and a second. Put on the roll.
Commissioner Omedo.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom. Yes. Commissioner Blakenham. Commissioner, they, Chair Gago.
I'm here, yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Is Commissioner Omedo here?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next item is item 9, county manager report on matters, who will update the commission on various items affecting Taos County. Mr. Porter.
Good morning, Chairman, commissioners. I have a few items on my report, so I actually want to make your meeting a little longer than it seemed on the paper, but. First, I wanted to update the board on the New Mexico Attorney General's presentation on the opioid manufacturer's litigation. They did attend that presentation last Tuesday afternoon. Commissioner Blakenham was there as well. Basically, a lot of good information was provided. I do appreciate that the AG did put on that presentation and gave us a little bit of insight that was kind of given to us directly versus having to hear it from all the other firms that are out there looking for our business. So one thing I guess is important to note is all 33 counties are currently covered by the AG suit with absolutely no cost for any of us to join. So they have gone ahead and filed their suit and included all 33 counties. Some kind of notable highlights, I guess, is that the AG is able to bring claims not available to your typical firm. Some of the claims they're bringing are statutory common law public nuisance and negligence, negligence per se claims. Some of the violations they're alleging are against the New Mexico Medicaid fraud act, unfair practices act, rapteering act, and that can only be brought by the Attorney General. Fraud against taxpayers, which is also something that can really be used by the Attorney General. And they're basically saying that these opioid prescriptions through a major marketing campaign in the 90s and 2000s created a madden for something that was not medically necessary. And so that is the basis of their claims. They did give us different options. Of course, they invited counties and municipalities to join in on the Attorney General's suit. They felt that with our joining in, they would certainly have a lot more power and the ability to work together so that we have a unified fight, essentially. So that was one option for us that they put out there. Obviously, other options would be to retain our own council, but it could be the same council that they have retained. So the Attorney General did go out to RFP for a third-party council. They hired a firm called Bear and Bud out of Louisiana. That's who's representing AG and the state of New Mexico. So they gave us that option to do our own RFP, go out. We could use the same firm, Bear and Bud, or we could use our own firm. The one thing they did suggest if we did our own firm is to please work with the Attorney General, work with Bear and Bud, so that we are certainly collaborating and that we don't do anything that may cause damage to their case, or likewise, if they're not doing anything to cause them a problem. Essentially, at the end, the counties are going to be able to provide the data that is necessary. Without the counties, they're not going to be able to quantify the damages. And so it's very important to the AG that we have the same numbers when we get to the end of that in terms of the damages that we're bringing. So that is why they're really pushing us to, if we don't jump in with them, to work with them and to really be on the same page. They did absolutely suggest an RFP, so I'm grateful that they didn't jump the gun and do something outside of the RFP. They also gave us suggestions on how to structure the agreement. They do believe, and this isn't completely solidified, but there is a belief that a contingency agreement may be a violation of New Mexico law. So what they're suggesting, and the way they entered into their agreement with Bear and Bud, is something they call a load start agreement. It basically covers all reimbursements with no percentage, and it is really at the end of the case determined by the court. And it's usually based on hours worked and the settlement comes from the court, so we're not promising any percentage upfront for any firm. This would give them their reimbursement, they would get paid accordingly, but it would be based on the judgment. And so it was very useful to hear those kinds of things and to give us a little bit of a heads up as we move forward. It does sound like Burnley County is crafting an RFP that will be what we would most likely want to use or borrow. They will be looking at the load star contingency in their agreement, and I'm going to get into contact with the county manager and see if we can get a copy of their RFP. If the board does decide that we should go out on our own, I would use that RFP. There are advantages both ways. Grace Phillips is also in attendance from Association of Counties, and so we had a little bit of a discussion after the fact. There is a little bit of concern that by joining in the AG's suit, we may not have a proper seat at the table with the ability to determine exactly what the damages need to come back to Taos County. So that was one concern, something I was a little concerned about hearing because there's not a formula yet from the AG's perspective as to what we're going to actually receive if we join. Obviously, the more damages in a county, you would expect more money to come our way, but that hasn't been solidified yet. So there may be a reason why we want to still do our own. It really may be a reason why we want to get our own council so that we can definitely work collaboratively with the AG, but have our own seat at the table. So this will be a major discussion topic for the State of Conference at NMC in January. And I think based on the discussions that we have with the manager's affiliate, that you guys have in your commissioners affiliate, I would like to revisit that right after the NMC conference and bringing to the board a decision in one way or the other if we want to do this with our own council, if we want to join with the AG. What I did realize from this is we do need to be participating. So Taos County definitely needs to participate in one way, shape, or another, because otherwise we may be left out, or we may not get our entire damages heard. And so very beneficial presentation, but there's still a lot of questions out there, and I think the NMC conference will answer a lot of what's out there for what's to happen. Any questions in the board?
Mr. Chairman, when you talk about receiving damages, how, what is the argument for that? How would Taos County receive damages, monetary damages, or how would those damages be paid out if they were to happen? Because it's in fact individuals that have affected by legal issues.
So the, I think the approach that most of the donors are taking, including the AG, is to look at the overall community impact of those individuals that were falsely sold on this not medically required opioid. And basically, we do carry the drunt of the social costs, the detention center. Most of the individuals that are in there tend to have a problem of one shape or another that we then end up dealing with and trying to help them deal with. So, you know, that's a major component. Our hospital sees a lot of these individuals that are in now, so we would be able to work with them to probably help quantify some of what they see. It is somewhat subjective, so that's the reason why I think the AG wants to work with the county, but I don't see any other way that they can quantify damages without the counties telling them about our operational expenses and how we have over the last two decades seen increases potentially in this certain population or that. And so you're right, it is on the individual, but what is that individual over time causing a taxpayer to recover on their behalf because of the issue that they have fallen into? So I hope I answered your question. I did appreciate Commissioner Blakenham being there to listen to the legal terms and helping kind of work out some of those questions, because most of it is pretty understandable, but when you get into some of the legal jargon, it was nice to have that interpreter in the room, so.
Commissioner Odom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How long did they predict it would take to move through the court system?
Years. They didn't give a solid date, but they did liken it a lot to the tobacco litigation, which took many, many years and many different venues. They have multi-state agreements by the end of that, there's potential possibility for doing that with this case. So yeah, years, it's nothing that's going to happen overnight.
Commissioner Odom.
Thanks, Chairman. Great summary, and I agree. So, you know, the question is going to be whether or not we trust the state to allocate the funds, or whether or not, you know, the county wants to see what they have. Right now, they're talking about payment programs that they would use, but I don't know, I think this administration would have a better take on how the money should be used. So we'll see what comes out of the conference and go from there. But yeah, it'll probably be settled, if anything, in a couple of years, you know, it's not that good at all, but true, but we'll see.
One thing they did mention was, I think some of the counties that jumped in early are already facing some challenges, and things are already being dismissed at different levels of the court. So the other reason why we should work unified and have the same approach, because the danger of getting tossed out sort of beyond may not hold well at the back end when we're asking again. So it is important that we work with them or at least kind of collaborate in our approach.
And the other thing was that, you know, it really doesn't make sense to have 33 separate suits from 33 different counties, and so it would be nice if neighboring counties joined in.
Mr. Chairman, was it one county, the first one in New Mexico? And what's the status of that?
I believe they were the ones they were talking about that have already been dismissed out of one particular court, and now they're kind of backtracking and having a look at an approach. They also, as I believe, entered into one of those contingency-based contracts, and I believe it was a pretty high amount that their lawyers had been taking on that. So maybe it been the first game, but it might have been worth waiting a little while to see what their options are. So thank you, no other questions about that. The next big meeting I attended with Mr. Haramio and Mr. Juan Lopez from District 5 was a meeting with the Pico Riz Pueblo on roads. The Pico Riz Pueblo had requested this meeting a while back, we're finally able to schedule the meeting, and essentially, we're talking about right-of-way easements. They have had a lot of calls and concerns from different individuals around the pueblo in District 5 that are trying to maybe refinance their home or do something that requires a title company to find a clear title to their property, and when it comes to easements, that's become difficult. And so it's an issue that the pueblo's bringing up, not unlike many of the fights that San David County may be having with San Luis Ponce, Wakem, Ambe. This did not feel contentious in any way, shape, or form. The governor and the council want to work with the county. They actually felt, they felt that there's no role concern, we're the people that are having a hard time refinancing or getting clear title. So what that looks like for us is the county will have to be researching all of our road inventory documentation, all of it to the pueblo lands. We've already had a follow-up meeting with Mr. Tim Corner, the foreman, Ramon, our superintendent, to talk about mapping and try to immediately, at least eliminate what truly is on private claimants, so that we're not chasing our tail on things that are clearly defined. But after that, if we get to a road on our inventory that is relevant to pueblo lands adjacent to, we have no clear right-of-way easement, then it would probably require us to do a then it would probably require us to do a survey in order for us to truly know what we're asking for. And then we'll probably have to follow the process, go through the process to request an easement. The easement reprocess with the pueblo involves a DIA, and so it will take a while. This is certainly just the beginning of this issue, it's an ongoing issue. But it does seem like it is the county's responsibility at the end of the day to figure out what documentation we have regarding all of our easements and all of our roads. So we will head down that path. We certainly have gotten a lot of help from, from county departments. I want to thank the GIA staff up there and the staff in the accessories office that have been working together to provide those maps, which give us a good head start on what we really need to focus on and what we can wait till later. But I doubt that this will be the last we hear about these kinds of easement issues as well. And so I think as the county will work through this, will identify a process for us and will continue to follow that and maybe continue to look at our inventory and go back and address it. It's important for our constituents to know they have clear titles to their property, clear easement in and out of all of their lands that they own. And the county's working to try and help clear that up and just put it back together.
Mr. Chairman, there was one gentleman on Valdésra. His side where the solar arrays are. And if there was a way to prioritize surveys, I know he had made a request to me a year or so ago about the issue he was having, you know, trying to sell his land. He couldn't get quiet titles. So if there is a way to prioritize, maybe based on those kinds of requests and maybe the pueblo has some roads they want to prioritize too. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I don't think there's a whole lot of documentation on our easements. I think that it's mostly by prescription, you know, just usage over time would work. But I don't think you can find a whole lot of papers.
Agreed, and so far, no, we haven't found it. DIA is also pushing the pueblo on things like mapping and mobile addressing. And so they have, they do want to see it get fixed for multiple reasons. But I guess I don't feel like it's a contentious issue, but they certainly want to have that documentation as well.
Oh, yeah, so with Pico Riz, we'll end up having some easements. That would be cool.
And the truth is, at the end of the day, there may be a value that is related to the survey and that value does need to be negotiated. We've got a lot to talk to the pueblo about it. The current governor, who may be gone at the end of the month, hopefully he will still be there saying, we would definitely work collaboratively. My favorite thing I heard in the meeting is, we're both broke. You guys are broke, we're broke, so we would work out this together. And I appreciate that, we will work this out together. After the meeting on the roads, we certainly talked about a lot of other issues. It was a great collaborative meeting, and so I think it is good that we started this process.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner O'Donnell did not attend?
No, we met with just the administration at the time to talk about what the actual issues were and to make sure that we knew what we're really facing. So I think it was okay at that point, it's really an administrative process. All right, no other questions on that. The next big meeting we had was our audit exit conference. That was on November 28. We have completed our audits. It has been submitted to the Office of the State Auditor by the deadline, which was December 1st. Chairman Fong was in attendance along with our treasurer and finance and treasurer staff. We cleared all of our prior year findings. So I'm very proud of staff for doing that. We certainly attacked all the prior year findings. There are a couple new ones. And so upon acceptance from OSA, it will become publicly recorded and auditors will come back and be sent to the full board. However, you will have final bound copies probably by next week in your box. We'll be sending that to us right now. So all in all, the grand auditors, I thought it went pretty well. We had a lot of good collaboration between the finance department and treasurer's office. And everything is a learning experience, just like the ones we got rid of this year. We'll get rid of the new finding next year. So I do appreciate that we're always working towards improving.
I know we can't talk about it, but one of the findings is already taken care of. And why they didn't accept that angered me very much. But we can't talk about it publicly until the audit is approved and they will make a presentation to us sometime in late January.
So thank you, staff, just wanted to make sure that they got the praise they deserved. It's a long process to go through an audit. And it was certainly a little more tedious issue with the grand auditor, and I appreciate all of their efforts. We had a good meeting last week with the folks at Open and New Genoa Pharmacy. I think some of you attended the chairman opening of the pharmacy. The following day, we had a meeting where they approached the county to specifically enter into a pharmacy agreement. That new pharmacy is what they call a closed pharmacy, which means that it's not just open to the public. I mean, you know, off the street, can't go with other prescriptions there. However, if you fill out the agreement, it gives you the opportunity to work with them. So one of their initiatives is to try and help our detainees as they leave detention center get the necessary prescriptions that they need to continue on a good path of recovery, whether it be diabetes medicine or psychotropics or whatever they need for their recovery. So another advantage to the counties, joining them would be that all of our staff, any of our employees would be able to use this closed pharmacy. So I do have a pharmacy agreement. I do feel like I can sign that on behalf of the board. I just wanted you to be aware that this is something that Taus County is looking forward to. It does feel like we're giving something back to the detainees and to our staff. There's just, it's always good to have options and give everybody more options. One of the cool things is they'll actually come deliver the prescriptions to detention centers. So upon release, they're actually walking away with their prescribed medication. So I felt very good about that presentation. I asked so many questions, it felt too good to be true. It really did, I kept asking, what's in it for you? What are we hoping, what are we going to have to pay? No cost to the county, there's no other obligations to the county other than to sign the agreement and participate, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think they also do mail deliveries. So if a staff needed their, and they couldn't get over, they could have it mailed to them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, that's also a great opportunity is the mail delivery. So if you do have prescriptions that are repetitive, it's worth getting that mailed to your house and you know it's there. If there's no more questions on that, I attended a meeting last Thursday at the tax and rent department along with the North Central RTB attorney, the San Jose County attorney, and the La Salle County attorney to talk about the request from the RTB to amend their ordinance. Well, the ordinance, that's actually ours. Each county had to pass an ordinance originally for the election of the tax that you're treating. In that ordinance, they had required specific dates of election. What the RTB's been asking for is to be able to remove the dates of the election so they could take a couple attempts in case it fails. So they want to take multiple bites at the apple. We met with RTB to just basically get them to agree that we don't need to go back out to an election for the voters to say we got to remove the dates of the next election. So instead, what they gave us was the opportunity to do an ordinance that would just simply repeal those dates. So this grand, I just received this, I have to give it to Mr. Adio for review. But because it's an ordinance, it will have to go through our entire process and we'll probably start looking at that in the new year if we're comfortable with it. Like I said, it doesn't need to go to the voters yet. All they're asking for is us to remove the dates that they can and take the question to the voters to remove the sunset of their tax. So that meeting went pretty well. I do feel like RTB, TRD is now kind of out of the way. It's no longer an obstacle and the other two attorneys felt comfortable as well.
The other reason that they want to move the date up on the election is they feel that they're, I mean, they didn't die by grants. If it's still there and there's no certainty that they would be past the 2022 date, then starting next year, they probably would not be eligible for any grants because the grant cycle would go past or up to that 2022 date. And so that's why they want to do the election earlier to remove the sunset.
And on that note, they also have some ambitions to build a new heat building. There is an obligation, one hand tells for that. They would need to borrow some money and they will not get a loan from NMFA with that sunset. It would only be for a short amount, it's left on the sunset.
And they're trying to tiger grant on that.
Yes. So I mean, all that, we do support it. Ultimately, if it failed, we would be looking, they would be looking at us and the town would take back those transportation services and see if we want to provide them. So at the end of the day, that's a little intimidating for me to think we would be asked to run transportation when that entity has already done it for many years. They do it pretty well. So that was what that meeting was about. And then also, I just wanted to give you all a quick update on our Airbnb agreement. I want to thank our chief deputy clerk for giving me some numbers, but it looks like we received our first payment for the month of October. It was $4,562.77 on a total gross taxable rent of $91,255. So if this is all new, that's great. If we were not collecting on any of this before, we're definitely going to see an increase in our Dodgers collection. And I think it was a great idea to go with the agreement there maybe. So I just wanted to give you some preliminary numbers, thank you. I'll keep doing administration.
Mr. Chairman, when was that agreement signed?
We signed it late September, I believe. So it went into effect October 1st. And just a couple of things, our OEM director has been working really hard on the hazard mitigation plan. We're getting close to completion on that. So you'll be seeing that in word study in the next couple of months to give the board a good draft of the final product and see how we feel about that.
Good job, Mark.
Yeah, it's been a lot of work, a lot of time over the last couple of years. So we're getting close to completion of that. San Luis Obso Fire Department is getting built. It's up, you'll start to see some metal going. All the cement was poured last week and it's getting built. So very grateful for the weather. I know not everyone's happy to not have snow on the ground, but here we've been completing projects all the way to the center. So I do appreciate that that's one that we hope to get done before too much snow on the ground and park some fire trucks. And we also had the day opening yesterday for real for NAMO Fire Department, and it was a really good turnout. Can't talk much more about the chairman, but we did have a good turnout of local contractors. So that's always promising. We also completed some improvements at the Yonka Model Museum in December over the last couple of weeks. Put a new stamp for them in the back and did some painting improvements inside. And just for the board to be aware, I have been called back to jury duty again. So from December 15th to February 16th, I am on call potentially for jury duty in Tierra Malinas. Of course, they gave me the most, well, not snowy ones, but potentially it's going to be some fun driving if I have to go up to T A. And I stopped, any questions for the board of this panel?
I had a quick question about, you say the hazard mitigation plan is not the same as the emergency planning document?
They are very similar, they're two different documents. They typically go hand in hand, but one is basically a two-year renewal. The other is a three-year renewal, one's more federal document, one's the other's more state. But they're very similar and I've worked together. So we've been working on both at the same time. So both of those will be coming to you sooner or later. The hazard mitigation plan is, we got funding for that, federal funding for it, and it also opens up the door for us for more grants and stuff like that.
I guess I haven't seen that. I wanted to make sure there's a clause in there for radiation planning? Like if there were any kind of nuclear disaster segment that advises what people should do or where they should be or... I'd like to see the tunnel included in evacuation plan. That's the safest place underground. And you know, this is just long-term, probably would never, never happen, but you never know that tunnel is the safest place in the county for any kind of radiation fallout.
I'll follow up with, as you say, on that. I'm not sure if that's in there, but the same contractor that did our deal, La Salle was coming, San Jose County, so it may have been something that came up. So I'll follow up.
All right. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Black, sorry. That's a bit of water.
Yeah. Just one quick one, do you have any ideas on timelines on the new senior center and what will happen to the old building?
So you guys just approved the grant agreement in our consent agenda. So now that we have the grant agreement, we can finalize agreements with the facility bill. We hope to have a groundbreaking on that in April and a completion the following, later the following April. So we're moving really well on that one. The idea to repurpose the other building for daycare, childcare facility is still an idea. Nothing has been committed for that other building as of yet, but we're still making improvements to that building as well. So Phoenix County was been out there the last few weeks working on HVAC and those issues. So the building will be a great building for use after it's done.
You know what's done, and I don't want to go into Commissioner Daggles's business, but I really hate the location of the one in Coespa. It's so dangerous to come down that hill, down that hill and pulling out in that intersection. So I really think we should, for the better of seniors in the northern part of the county, we really need to look at getting done with that location.
And on that note, the mayor hasn't discussed that with me. And we are looking at a building in particular of the Village homes and seeing what possibilities we have there. So he's requested county staff to evaluate the building, take a good look at it and kind of give us an idea of what it would take to bring that up to standard. And if that's in a better location, definitely.
Mr. Chairman, no. Okay, Commissioner O'Donnell and then Commissioner Black.
Mr. Chairman, back in August, we had discussed in your report the lighting agreement that there was one with the state of Mexico Highway Department on the intersection of C-110 and 68. Whatever came to that?
I have not gotten a follow-up response on the lighting agreement on that.
Did you communicate with the two?
I spoke with the deputy secretary about that and he said he'd get back and hang it forward.
Was it a letter or?
We just opened the phone.
I see.
So I will write a letter, it's the letter, we will formalize it. Get that to him.
Is there any agreement that exists already to tax company?
Not on that intersection, I do remember we have other agreements on different lights, but not in that particular intersection.
I'm just kind of worried, I kind of thought we did have a lighting agreement with them. Out of about eight or 10 lights, there are about five or six that are palate and that intersection is partially dark and probably very dangerous, very dangerous.
I will follow up again, I'll follow up for that. So it's formal.
Yeah, back to the answer, I forgot to ask, how did we resolve the reversionary clause with the town?
We sent them a letter requesting they remove the reversionary clause, and I haven't gotten any feedback from them. I understood in the conversation with Mr. Bellis that that was fine, it was a done deal. But I've heard in other conversations with other parties that they had another request. I had not received another request for a formal, secondary formal request.
I've been trying to follow it since then.
So I was, I'll write another letter as well and follow up one more time. We did ask very specifically to remove the reversionary clause completely. But what I understood from a third party is that they want us to commit the building to something else before they keep the reversionary clause away. And I don't think that's fair enough. I think they should just remove the reversionary clause. Then us, people's right with the building as you have seen.
Sounds familiar.
Yes. Remember?
Mr. Chairman.
It's a little.
Hi, Christian.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Could you, Mr. Manager, could you please thank public, the facilities department, for the cleaning they did at the Higasco Community Center and the carpet?
Well, do, thank you for noticing. Mr. Flores and I have talked, we believe he's going to make a commitment to try and get to all of our community centers at least once a month and do a little bit more work, do a little bit more, just have more presence for the county. As we know, especially in Higasco, a lot of the people that helped us with these community centers are elderly and they put in a lot of volunteer work. And the least we could do is help with some of the heavy lifting, so. Thanks for listening. They also worked on the bathrooms, the doors, they did a lot of the electrical issues.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
Moving on to IEDs, commissioners, reports, matters. IMA is new business, we consider the future meeting. Anything, commissioners? Seeing none, Georgia?
Oh, hi, how are you? Is it possible for new business to be considered or not to be considered, at least to be discussed, what the future looks like in the next six months at the hospital? Do you have some concerns and you want to have either some discussion with the administration commander as well as the other commissioners? Mr. Chairman, I was kind of wondering if you put that to rest or decided not to go forward with the thought that you had a few months ago?
I do have some ideas. I just ended up having a meeting at the hospital a couple weeks ago. I just want to kind of be over.
I just want to kind of be able to report that to the commission based on the idea that we do still have to approve lease agreements and stuff like that. So, I don't want to have that either be in a closed session, Mr. Chair, or do we have a discussion?
In the meantime, President Chairman is opening a new hospital in San Jose. A huge hospital.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Daniels, I've also pre-read the lease a few times here in the last couple of weeks and I would recommend to the board we look at that primarily with that lease is over twenty years old. And I believe at the time it was written more for protection of the lawn holders than it was the county or the hospital. And we wrapped up all of our operations in the lease. So, it does seem prudent for us to really take a good look at that and maybe separately, operations from a land lease. It was probably shouldn't be that individually. And, you know, there's no representation of the board on the hospital. And I understand there's a lot of issue to that back in time. We gave the original lease and that's probably something that should be visited at this time. This board should have a representation.
They all said it was a liability issue that had removed the whole bird of reason representation of the board.
Thanks. Good discussion. Good discussion. Any announcements, Commissioners? Okay, then we will move on to item eleven. These are items that may be discussed in closed session. IMAE is discussion regarding outstanding litigation. These matters may be discussed in executive session under the Oakland Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one H seven, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Item B is discussion regarding a county attorney physician. This matter may be discussed in closed session under Oakland Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one H two, which allows for discussion of limited personnel matters. Item C would be a discussion regarding the town plaza. This matter may also be discussed in executive session under Oakland Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one H eight, which allows for discussion of purchase, acquisition, disposal of real property or water rights by the public body. And item D is discussion regarding proposed settlement of the NMAC matter, Anastasia Concha versus Towns County. This matter may be discussed in closed session under Oakland Meetings Act exemption ten dash fifteen dash one H seven, which allows for discussion of pending or threatened litigation. Is it the request of the attorney that we discuss A through D in closed session? Okay, I need a motion from the board to go in closed session.
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second to handle items A through D of item eleven in closed session. Does anybody, let's click over.
Commissioner Madoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gais?
Yes.
Colonel Pepper?
Yes.
We're back. I need a motion to move into regular session.
So, move.
Second. Quick call roll.
Commissioner Madoff?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gais?
Yes.
Chairman Pepper?
Yes. Mr. audio, would you give a report regarding the four items that were discussed? And did we stay on topic?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we went in closed session to discuss several litigation matters and a briefing on litigation by me. And then we also were in executive session on a personnel matter in relation to the county attorney. And those matters were discussed and nothing further was discussed and no action was taken.
Motion to accept Mr. audio's report in closed session.
So, move.
Second. Quick call roll.
Commissioner Madoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gais?
Yes.
Chairman Pepper?
Item twelve is adjourned.
So, move.
Second. All here, say hi.
All right.
Thank you all. We are on to the day.